And we are live.
Thank you.
I have Steve Cash to take it on.
Bruce, happy birthday.
It's good.
How are you all doing?
Good. Are you Linda's there? Linda?
If I cough on you from here, I don't think it'll hurt you.
No. We wait till seven. Good. Like wondering up there. Just mentioned, I think we ought to add to the agenda, future report. Yeah. Question?
If you're going to find out. I made the same error that you committed last.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'll follow the meeting order. This is the city council, City of Prospect Kentucky Council regular meeting Monday, October 16, 2023. First item of business is the approval of the minutes. Those have been distributed. Are there any comments or corrections?
Yeah, under new, new business, there's a typo. And it should read an order consenting to the nomination of or by the mayor.
Yes, what else? Well, it reads a little because he was mayor.
Yeah, I think it reads okay. Yeah, never, never mind.
All right. Any, any other comments, corrections? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes that's distributed?
Take the motion.
Thank you, Don. Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes were approved. Next item on the agenda is comments from citizens. Jacqueline McGrail, it signs up to speak. Jacqueline, there's some. Sure. Yeah, that'd be fine. We'll do that. We'll do it that way. Mayor's report. I'll make some brief remarks on four matters. First, we have a Veterans Day event planned. It will be, that will take place on Tuesday, November 7, which is election day. Three, between three thirty and four thirty in the afternoon at the Pavilion in Little Hunting Creek Park. At four o'clock, the gathering begins at three thirty. At four o'clock, program will begin, and it will include participation by the Sons of the American Revolution. And will also include remarks by Prospect resident, retired major, Marine Major General Rick Huck. John Evans has met another Prospect resident who's a retired US Navy Admiral, Scott O'Brien. And I'm meeting with Admiral O'Brien tomorrow afternoon, and we may see if he can also participate in the event. I want to thank the committee that worked, that's worked on this event, and that includes John Evans, David Holmes, John Bishop, and Terry Rankhorn from the Sons of the American Revolution, John Canine, and Scott Giltner, and Gary Tyler, the CEO of the Prospect Area Chamber of Commerce. We also will have Toys for Tots boxes at the, at the event, and we'll encourage people to bring new unwrapped toy for donation, and those boxes are also out in the lobby here in City Hall. The second item I'm going to talk briefly about is the solar ordinance that we adopted at the September council meeting. Three citizens at that meeting raised concerns that the ordinance may be too restrictive. And during the meeting, we discussed forming a group to consider amendments that might improve the ordinance. I'm pleased to report that four individuals have agreed to serve on that committee. They include John Shelby, Carolyn Embry, David Wicks, and Sarah Hines, Councilmember Sarah Hines will participate also. That group will hold its first meeting on November 15. Third item that I'll discuss again briefly is the Forestation Board that's drafted a proposed, has drafted proposed amendments to the city's forestation ordinance. I anticipate that those proposed amendments will come before the council at its November meeting for consideration of a first reading. Frank assists, Frank Fulcher assisted in that process. I've been involved, and I believe the amended ordinance will assist the board in carrying out its important work. Finally, this evening, we will have come before the council, proposed revisions to the city's nuisance ordinance. And that will be for a first reading. Thanks to those who've contributed to this effort include John Clark, who chaired the group, Jacqueline McGrail, who's here, who'll be speaking a little later, Don Gibson, Frank Fulcher also participated in that effort, David Holmes, Sandra Leonard, David Wicks. And John, have I left anybody out? Probably.
We had a couple that only participated briefly, Steven March and Christine Price.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the work that's, that you all have done. It went on for some months, really.
Just months.
Yeah, and it was, it was a good, good exercise, and I think it, it showed, my understanding of the group is I didn't attend the meetings, but that everyone was respectful of one another, respectful of opposing points of view, and members reached a consensus. So I think that's all we can hope for, and really appreciate everyone's efforts. So that concludes the, the mayor's report. The next item on the agenda is financial report.
The compiled financial reports were sent with the council packet, or actually, they were sent after the fact council packet. You may have noticed a couple of things. We did amend the budget at the last meeting. However, since it was mid-month, those compiled financial statements are still based on the old budget. That will be amended come November, or the October statements. Cash on hand at the end of September was 3.8 million roughly. And our expenses last month totaled 241,000 and change. We've had significant tax collection this past month. We've had revenue of roughly 1.1 million collected. We currently have a checking account that's holding roughly 863,000. We've got a CD of just over a million, and the KLC investment product is just under $2 million invested. And I'll entertain any questions.
Questions for John? Thank you for that report. Forestation orders, please.
Our last board meeting was on the 12th of October. Some of the things have been going on. The board and the mayor have been working on a generic letter to be sent to residents who have hazardous trees. Of course, there have been such letters in the past, but this new draft letter has several improvements. It'll provide the specific details on the nature of the hazard and what's required by the property owner. And it'll also talk about the city programs where residents contain replacement trees, either free or reduce subsidized price. So this, this is definitely help homeowners understand better what their situation is and make them aware of an opportunity about the tree programs like Canopy and Arborfest, where they can get reduced costs in replacing trees. Another thing that's going on, we're working with three different property owners and managers for mitigation of hazardous trees on Bridgepoint Property, Stellon Property, and Gunsun Lake. And in all cases, the the responsible managers have agreed to eliminate the hazard without getting a formal order from Code of Sports. But in fact, just tonight, five o'clock, I got an email from Ted Krueger, who's running the Bridgepoint HOA, saying his argument with one tree company is still working on other ones. On Saturday, we have the Arborfest program right here in the rear City Hall from ten till noon. We're giving away 50 free trees, pop paws, dogwoods, red buds, sunbunny, rapier, and sweet magnolia. We expect to have an arbors there and answer questions, and we'll have lots of tree literature and coffee and donuts. And we have 12 trees on order now for planning on city property and Honey Creek Drive, Chestnut Hill, Putney Lake, Meadowway, Autumn Hill, Little Honey Creek Park. So those are the main programs right now, but there's always something. I just got a call again today from a resident at Bridgepoint who has a pin oak declining in front of his property. He wants our arbers to take a look at it and probably get permission to take it down.
Any questions? Any questions for Lee?
I've, I've asked Lee earlier today to, and I think it'd be useful for all of us, if he would provide us with the location of these, these trees. I have particular interest in Honey Creek Drive because we've
Yeah, I have that, Frank. I found it in my notes.
Okay.
It's on the exit side.
I think it'd be of use to everybody here because the residents might say, what's going on? At a certain, at a certain spot.
They're all applying to the City Hall.
Okay.
Anything else? Lee, thanks so much. We appreciate your work. You work for the Forestation Board. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Carolyn, are you giving the report?
The Prospect Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee met on October 2nd, right here in the library. And Linda Wardell, Chair of the Committee, gave a report on the Pollinator Garden Project. You'll recall that we planned, planned the Pollinator Garden in Harrods Creek Park right near the canoe lodge, just off the Orange Trail. So on Saturday, October 7, 10 students from St. Xavier High School planted the garden. And our newest member of the Parks Committee, Chrisler White, recruited those students and led them in in the project. Also, thanks to Ron Kunda for doing some advanced work in providing the tools and prepping the garden for, for planting. There were more students than were required to do the project, and so half of them picked up trash along the orange and, and blue trails. New directional trail signs for Putney Pond and the Woodlands have been delivered and will be installed this fall. Several members of the Pavilion Event Committee have created a survey that will be implemented through a website called Survey Monkey. And this is to gather feedback on the summer concert series. I want to thank David Holmes for overseeing that project. And once the surveys finalized, it'll be sent out to all Prospect residents and hope to get some good feedback that will inform our decisions on who to approach for next year's concert season. The Parks and Recreation Committee will once again participate in Arborfest on October 21st. Committee member Sally Schneider is planning a fall children's craft program, tentatively scheduled for Saturday, October 28. And then we learned that the organizer of the annual Harrods Creek Trail Bash has decided not to hold the event this year. So there wasn't enough time for us to make further plans for that, but we are hoping to reinstate that Trail Bash for next season. So, any questions?
Any questions for Carolyn? Thank you. Carolyn, appreciate you filling in for Linda. Library Committee report. John, is that true?
Can be.
Yeah.
Oh, many of y'all know that the library's in transition since Sandra left its leadership. John Clark's taking over as the council person sort of overseeing it. The, all the volunteers, including Julie McGovern, who I work with almost every day, have pretty much figured out the process. They are ordering books. They are purging books. So it operates as normal. We're still got a little bit of a learning curve. So it's still a, still in process, but everything's running smooth, and we kept all our volunteers but one. So I think everything's going good with the library. There is a sale this weekend, so remember your used book sale on Friday and Saturday, and it runs from nine to five. And if you have, if you're listening out there, bring in your used books, or go to Good Use, supporting our library.
Thanks. Appreciate that. Police report. Chief?
House checks.
Jeff, we need to get, we need to get you a microphone. Thanks.
Hey, the house checks from September of this year were about 500 higher than they were same period last year, but citations continue to be up. See, actually, reports from the law, even accident reports and regular reports were all down. That's nice. Quiet. We get, if you get taken through it before addition duty, where it's listed under arrest, felony report, and JCP report. And there was one incident that captures all three, the same person that arrested for the one offense, it fell under both a felony and a JCP, which meant it was a domestic situation where they were charged with a felony and it shifted across over a year, required to report it in a number of different ways. So it looks like it's a crime brand, but actually it's the same incident, and you have to capture the number of what was at the state. So it's not nearly exacting this. So it was a domestic, and there was an intimidation of the witness and a non. But it looks a lot better. And then we had a credit card theft from where they took a couple of credit cards out of the car down in Harrods Creek Park. They thought the car was locked, but there was no sign for forced entry, so could have been another way to get in the car. We just had it turned out that way. The cars were immediately used, which was sealed apart, of course. They're usually used within 15 minutes or so of being taken. We did have a theft. This was an employee-related theft, or somebody was working in Alice Conraper. One of the employees went into a bedroom and took a wallet, and then immediately was using credit cards. Home, or actually, I called the contractor, and the contractor didn't realize. Actually, administered street justice on their employee, got it back. But they already used the credit cards, but anyway, in the process of getting restitution. But actually, they had done better than before the police team got involved and got all the stuff back. So it's going to be, if somebody, we didn't do something. They went by the gas south, roused him up, and oh, we had someone that was shopping in Brokers, and then somebody comes along. You can see the video of them reaching inside the person. And they don't allow us to, the wallet's gone until they go out to pay for their stuff. And then there's no longer that's it with regards to the reports. And so the lock cameras, they've actually already been to the sites, conducted onsite surveys. And they've done in the last week, and everything that they've indicated to me, they didn't discover any problems with the sites that we picked, so they should be moving along with that. And then Officer Mike Thomas retired on September 30th, and he worked here for 17 years. He had service elsewhere. So he had long service here, did a great job, and missing, he provided a lot of service in your presence. So that's going to be hard to replace, but we are in the process of obtaining the records.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff? Okay. Next item on the agenda is new, new business. First is a resolution, authorization from the city clerk to file application for federal financial assistance. John, you want to say something?
This relates to the windstorm, I believe that was on March 6, I believe.
March 2.
March 2. So there was a a declaration of a disaster, and so there are federal lines available to us, and currently, our claim is right around the $20,000 mark, and this resolution allowed me to pursue that money.
I guess we get a motion in a second.
Move, so moved.
Thank you. Motion to second, sir. Discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Resolution is adopted. The next item of new business is the first reading of ordinance 632, Series 2023, an ordinance relating to the amendments and modification of Chapter 92, nuisances of the code of ordinances of the City of Prospect. Is there a motion to give that ordinance a first reading?
I'll move.
Okay. Mr. Clark made that. Not yet. We need a second, another second. And is there, and Mr. Gibson?
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes, I'd like to say a few things. The committee did a great job. This is, this was a tough job, a lot of words, and a lot of work. I have, I have several questions relating, relative to the not to the content or the intent, but to the construction of it. I think there's some things that might have been overlooked. And I'll just give you a brief example. On page six. This was a, because this was trying to combine two or three or four different examples, sometimes it's difficult to get our head around some of those things. But anyway, about halfway down the page, unlawful burning. You know, it says accumulation of residue, including et cetera, et cetera. So there's nothing in, there's nothing burning about that paragraph. And I think that unlawful burning originally was that it's unlawful to burn leaves or brush or something else. So I think that might be worth looking at because the accumulation of residue, et cetera, might better belong in the rubbish part of this thing. That's just an example of the type of thing I'm talking about. I think it doesn't, it doesn't affect the content or intent, but the construction, yes, definitely. The, the thing of substance that I'm concerned about is on 13, page 13. Where
So, so Frank, can I ask you a question about that? Are you suggesting it just needs to be in another location, or are you saying that you don't agree that we don't want people to accumulate those residents? We're prohibiting in that it's not a paragraph, I guess it is. We're prohibiting people from accumulating that kind of residue. Well, following burning or coming out of burning or however, but you're not suggesting I shouldn't include that, are you?
No, no. No, what, let me, let me just put it another way.
Okay.
Okay, this, this says unlawful burning. What about lawful burning residue? Lawful burning residue, is that okay? And unlawful burning residue, that, that's just my point. The, the words, the words need to match.
So are you
I think, I think that
Are you gonna
Missing, we're, we're missing the nuisance of burning in this whole thing. You know, somewhere it's got to say it's unlawful to burn leaves in your yard.
So you
We don't say that here.
So you're suggesting that we should consider some amendments to that before the second reading?
I don't think, I don't think it yes, but I don't think it interferes with the substance. I may be wrong. But the thing of substance that I question is on 13, where it says it was the right of entry.
What section?
B, page 13, about third of the way down, B.
Oh, the first B, okay. Right of entry, okay.
I, I would, I think we need a legal opinion on that because the principle of curtilage, as it was explained to me, that is not illegal, something we can do legally, and I, I may be wrong. But the city was sued a number of years ago by a resident who had the, the piece of a boat sticking out from behind his garage and the code enforcement or policeman, whoever went back there. Now, I just know the story. I don't know the result. I don't. That's, but I questioned the, our ability to just go onto someone's property. Someone says, hey, you know.
Now, you asked me about this before the meeting.
Yeah.
And I said, I didn't know. I think now I know. And I think I know the guy and the house and, and the whole story, and one of our police went on to his property, and he sued the city because you know, and I, I know who it was.
Okay, but my question
I think he got a big settlement, too.
My question is the legality of us.
Yeah, we need to look at that.
So doing that.
Will, will Chris look at that for us before?
Yeah, let, let me look at that before the next meeting.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. Come on in.
There were more facts to that that changed a little bit. I believe it wasn't a curtilage issue. It was the fact that the officer went beyond what should have been the scope of his inquiry. There was a boat that was underneath, it was a boat underneath, and it was on a trailer underneath the cover, and he raised the cover and got plate number off of it. And when he did that, just to put on the citation, he could have easily, without doing anything whatsoever, wrote that it appeared to have a bow undercover. He didn't need to get all that. That the citation would have stood if he said that there was a boat on a trailer undercover, because it's obvious the cover doesn't cover the entire boat. on a trailer under a cover, because it's obvious the cover doesn't cover the boat. And then he didn't need to get a plate number on there. That was insignificant. And the citation would have stood because that was something visible from the street. Okay, it wasn't a curtilage issue. But where the problem was, he raised up the cover, and then that became interesting. And so that's where the lawsuit came from.
Okay.
But that that goes with the circumstances of that case, and there was a settlement.
It's still the right of entry, I think Chris needs to
Yeah.
To take a look.
And there are things that are visible from a location. That's why we don't get as much info. And so unless it's viewed from the spot where you have a legal right to be, whether you've been invited by a neighbor, that type of thing. But everything else, you don't look from the street, public access from the sidewalk. It's all free.
Yeah. Whatever. There are a few, there are a few other construction issues that this would take up too much time to discuss. So I'd like to get with David Holmes, who was this legal background, and his wordsmithing to see how that goes.
He's 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 got a second job. He's got him tied up this month, though. He spends all his time at Keeneland.
I go to Keeneland.
Maybe you all can meet at Keeneland.
I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Chief, is there a KRS that addresses right of entry?
Probably not.
This says property or premises, so I assume we probably wouldn't want people going into premises necessarily.
No, not unless they're invited, or there's some kind of grave emergency.
So getting with Chris on that. And I have a question also. As a policy matter, when there's a citation, does a resident also get information on how to deal with it, pay the fine and appeal? We give them enough information that
It's on the foot side of citation.
Yeah. Is it?
All the directions are how they
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Is there any further discussion? The motion is to give the ordinance a first reading. That's been seconded. Is there further discussion? Not everybody to vote on the question of whether to give the ordinance a first reading.
Oh.
I'll call the rolls. Frank?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Before I vote, I have a question.
All right.
Are they suggesting changes such that we shouldn't give it a first reading until those changes are made? I don't know.
I don't know either, but I think what I would suggest we consider doing is going ahead, giving a first reading. Chris will let us know if there's
And if we need to, we can do it again.
Exactly.
I'll go for it, yes.
Okay, Sarah? Okay, that that motion is carried unanimously. And so if you will read the title of the ordinance.
Ordinance number six thirty-two, series twenty twenty-three, an ordinance relating to the amendment and modification of chapter ninety-two, nuisances of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Prospect.
Thank you. So that concludes the agenda with the exception of, is there any other business that I may have missed? So we have
There, I'd also like to thank the people that participated on the committee. It was ten people and several. Seven really did all the work on it. We had a couple that came to one meeting or so, but I'd like to thank the Subcommittee for Structure, which was David, Don Gibson, Frank, and Sandra Leonard. And the Definitions Subcommittee was Jacqueline McGrail and David Wicks. They they did the bulk of the work on putting this thing together, so I'd like to thank them.
Yeah, I'm very appreciative to the entire committee and John to you for your leadership.
And it did take six months to basically get to the near the final form. We had a couple of meetings after that, but it was it's it was hard gathering ten people together or even seven for a meeting, but we did it, so.
Okay, thank you. Then the remaining item on our agenda is citizen comments. Jacqueline, you have three minutes.
I just want to say that we did a lot of work on this committee, and it was a lot of back and forth, and there was a lot to discuss and a lot to come to understand. And I think people who had a preconceived notion of what property should look like have come to understand that there has to be some modification based on the needs of the environment. And it was hard work. It was hard going. But I think the proposed ordinance is a step forward and towards what not only we as a community, as a small community, but for our planet, for our entire planet and our ecosystem. So I want to thank the committee, and I was happy to be part of it.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Appreciate your participation.
Thank you, Jack.
And your comments. There's no further business to come before the council. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Same moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.